I'm convening the hearing of the Norwalk Charter Revision Commission. This evening, it is a public hearing and so we will first do roll call and I believe everyone is present. So we have Tyler, Barry, Steve, our counsel, Steve Mennick, our counsel, Rick McQuaid, our vice chair, Michael Witherspoon, Barbara, we got to get this right, right, Barbara Watton Raleigh, we have to say for the record both names, Angelo Watsuma, Carl Dickens, and Michael Witherspoon, I already did, didn't I? So we have a quorum. The minutes of the September 21 meeting have been sent out. Our commissioners, are there any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised for those that are on our Zoom connection, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. The next section of our hearing tonight is actually a public hearing for anyone in the audience or anyone that is watching on Zoom or anyone that wants to send in comments through the city's website is welcome to do so. This was our announced first meeting and it came to our attention that there was a mistake in the advertisement in the Norwalk hour on the date saying that we would be reporting out this year in November of 22 and obviously it was supposed to be November of 23. So consequently, we will be having a second public hearing just to make sure that we do everything as clearly as we possibly can for everything. So our next meeting will also be a public hearing in the same form as we're doing this evening. Have there been any people signed up that would like to speak tonight?
I've not reviewed the agenda, so I did not know.
Please, sir, identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is John Levin. I live in Norwalk at 249 Chestnut Hill Road. My wife and I have lived in Norwalk for 31 years at that address. So I didn't review the agenda. I didn't know that public comments would come right away. I see there's not a lot of public in the room tonight, nor the Zoom board either, which is fine. I have two suggestions. One is, I think that this is a very important city commission with a very important mission. Please consider creating alternates. If you're not going to expand the size of the commission, I think one thing that you can do to ensure that a quorum is always present is deepen your staffing level by offering an opportunity for alternates to attend, stay up to speed, and when appropriated necessary, be seated to vote. I would like to volunteer as an alternate as well. So if you do decide to look for alternates, I wish to put my name in the hat.
I respond to that. We were appointed by the city council and so that is the prerogative of the city council, not of the commission to appoint anyone.
Oh, the appointment, that's correct, but I think that this commission could decide that you would like to create a role for alternates. Because of course, there are city commissions like the Conservation Commission, for example, which meets with a very large agenda and a lot of work to do and needs alternates because if they don't have a quorum, then a lot of the work is.
You have three minutes, so would you, if you have other things you want to identify, that would be helpful.
I had another idea, but I'll share it at a different time.
You have time right now.
No, I'll save it for later.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody that has?
Thank you. If there's anyone from the remotely on Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now and I will unmute you.
There's no one presently. It's now, the clock in the chamber says 10 after 6:00. So at this point, there's no one that has approached us.
Mr. Levin like to add anything since there is open space?
Not this time. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll wait a couple of minutes and then I'll close the open the open hearing. We have counsel on, Steve Mennick is on and he has provided us with a, some ideas of how to structure how we're going to move forward and I just want to make sure that every, all the commissioners have received that information. And I would hope that our next meeting, Steve, you could lead us through some of that. If you would like to address any of that now.
I'd be happy, happy to, and if the public wants to speak, they'll have plenty of opportunity after my presentation.
Okay, so I'll just suspend the public hearing for a period of 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, nice to see everybody. Let me, let me amplify something the chair just pointed out with regard to the membership of the Charter Commission. It is controlled entirely by statute and the statute allows for a structure from five to 15 members. The council has decided on the number it has. There is no provision in the state law for alternates. You have a fixed number of members of a commission, so you do not have the authority and I would argue that the council does not have the authority to modify the structure of the commission as presently constituted. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record. With regard to the schedule, I had in our first meeting suggested two meetings a month and it makes no difference. I tried to set it up so that it was every other week. The chair has raised the issue of the possibility of having your meetings on the first and third Wednesdays of the month and that would, that would be just as well and just as fine if we were to do something like that. The one problem is, it actually, it would not pose a problem at that point if you did the first and third because my other commission in Stanford has meetings on the second Wednesdays. So it would skip over that completely. So the potential conflict that was in the current schedule doesn't exist. Our next proposed meeting, my next proposed meeting to you is that we have a meeting on two weeks from now or whatever, however, we decide to do the schedule with the, with the mayor and other elected and appointed officials. I would also invite the Corporation Council to appear there and the objective of that meeting is to get a feel for the priorities that the elected and appointed officials have for this Charter Commission, aside from the general admonition that we take a look at restructuring the charter and modernizing the charter, streamlining the charter. The inclusion of the Corporation Council, I normally have a meeting in most of my charter processes with the Corporation Council where we go through the charter into a red line. In light of the concerns about, about just the document itself, I think it would probably be more productive to have the Corporation Council or somebody from his office or representatives of the office come in and tell us where they think some of the potholes and problems are in the document so that as we go through the document, we, we keep those things in mind. The meeting I would suggest after, whatever the date may be, could be the first Tuesday, first Wednesday of the month, would be a meeting with Evergreen Solutions, which conducted an efficiency study and in their efficiency study, they spent a great deal of time talking about charter revision and it would seem to me that right up front in our process, it would make sense to spend an evening with people from Evergreen Solutions to kind of have them walk through the form of government and how they think the charter should be restructured since somebody spent a lot of money on them and, and it would be very productive and useful to try to integrate some of their thoughts in our process. After that process, after we obviously did not get a lot of comment from the public, the chair has also indicated that we would have another public hearing and we should do that periodically anyhow. We, after we finished the public hearing, the meeting from Evergreen, the meeting with the elected officials, we do, I recommend that we have a meeting that I call Level Set Meeting where we sit down and begin to lay out substantively how we want to attack the charter, how we want to structure our meetings going forward from now until next May. So, so the decision you have to make is whether we go with the every other week scenario or whether we do a first and third Wednesday scenario and I'm happy to go in any direction you'd like.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions on those comments?
I'd like to see us locked into first and third of the month only because that will set, the public will know that we're meeting every, and I have to worry about when is the second meeting, when is it? I think we lock in and it'll be better for the committee.
Any other comments?
No, I would agree with that. I, because I sent out my social media stuff and I said it also, John, I don't know if you got, if it got forwarded to the other members of District D or not, but I sent out a notification about this meeting and I did it on Facebook and I did it through the District D members of the Republican Party. It's good, it's quite honestly, I mean, this is a very, very important document that needs, I mean, it's the grassroots for the city operating, obviously, and this is disappointing. Now, it's either disappointing because a lot of the members didn't want to come or a lot of people didn't know about it, but I agree, whatever we could do to lock it in in people's minds and better communicate this through whatever media we can to communicate it and get more people here, that would be a real benefit.
Would you like to comment?
No, I think having it on a set schedule, the first and third makes sense. I will just, I'll check back with you guys. I think the, they're having it on the third Wednesday in November instead of the second.
Because of.
It's Thanksgiving.
It's, it's the New Year. Or.
The third.
Sixteenth in November, I might, might have a conflict there, but again, I could check back another time. I think it certainly makes more sense to stick to a fix first and third rather than have to try to count back.
And any of our commissioners that are on Zoom would like to comment, please?
I also support having meetings on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. That would be better for the public as well.
Yeah, and I fully agree.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
Can I ask one question though? Do you still want to have the meeting on the 26th of October because we don't have, unless we do?
Well.
I have a meeting next Wednesday that I cannot, so I can't be here for the third meeting in October.
So are you saying that if we have a meeting on the 26th, you are not available?
No, I'm available on the 26th. I'm not available next Wednesday, so we can start the first and third in the month of November.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that, oh, I'm sorry, cutting you off. I make a motion that, starting in November, that we meet on the first and third each month.
So we would win executive weeks, right? At the, at the beginning.
Yeah, right.
Okay, second to the motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. There's one comment, Steve, that you made that I want to make clear and that is the scheduling of the next public hearing, as it was my understanding because of the mistake in the paper, that, that they wanted us to do that at our next meeting. And you had indicated you didn't want a public hearing. I thought you indicated you didn't want a public hearing until, till we saw, had two other meetings with the.
Oh, I don't care. You can do your public hearing whenever you'd like. What the, what the opinion said is that it's just an abundance of caution. The, the mistake was not in the notice, the mistake was in an accompanying document. So you can do it at the next meeting and if you'd like.
And then at the same time, we would have the mayor and the council present?
I think, yeah, I think you, you may want to start that.
Yeah, that's scheduled.
Exactly. How does the commission feel about that?
Yeah. Is there a, is there a notice requirement you need to have?
Yeah, there's, yes, definitely.
But if an X amount of time between when we were advertising them or we were the host it, so if we were to have it at the next meeting, would be enough time?
We have plenty of time.
I believe so, yes. But is it, is how many, four days?
Forty-eight hours, basically.
Pardon?
Two days for a notice for a special, yeah.
For a special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting. I'd get the notice out for a public hearing as soon as possible.
I think that's important because if anybody perceives that there was a mistake, we deal with it immediately and not protract it.
I agree.
Into what we really want to be talking about.
Want to start at six o'clock again, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Right.
And.
Will that be a standard start time for all of our meetings?
Yes.
I, I believe so, but if the commissioners would like to discuss it, it's open for discussion. Does anybody want to address that? I don't see any hands going up either on screen or off. So we would maintain the six o'clock and I do think that should be in a motion, the two items should be in a motion for the record.
Make a motion that our meetings begin at six o'clock on the first and third Wednesday of each month.
Second.
With the exception of the, the meeting held on October 26th.
Do a separate motion for that because it's going to be a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, who seconded, I'm sorry?
I think Mike Williams.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Excuse me, through the chair, it's the secretary. There's someone who is logged in as Charter Revision Commission and it's a picture of the Norwalk sign and I don't know who that is. That is the motion, that's what I need to know.
That is the meeting host, that's not a person on the commission.
Okay, then who made, who just made that time motion through the chair?
Rick, Rick McQuaid.
I'm sorry, who?
Rick McQuaid.
Oh, okay, sorry, Rick, you weren't coming through.
I'm shy.
And so, the motion is in order to hold a public hearing and, and a meeting on the October 26th.
Again, I'll make a motion for us to hold a public hearing on October 26th at 6:00 PM to override, that we planned it for the commission.
Is there second to that motion?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. So, um, the only other things that we might discuss tonight, Steve, if you want to give us some instructions on how to start to read the, the draft ideas that you put together for us.
Thank you. Well, they're not draft ideas, it's a reorganized charter.
Right.
So what I tried to do without changing any words, I, you'll see that I did do some editorial things with regard to the way numbers are used so that you'll see a number with a parenthetical spelled out, then with a parenthetical next to it and things like that, just to develop some consistency. But what I tried to do is I tried to take every provision that's in your current charter. And the, the first thing I did is I moved all of the taxing districts from the beginning of the charter to the end of the charter. It's not clear to me how much we will get into the taxing districts, but I thought that the charter document, your governing document should commence at the beginning by saying, this is the charter, this is what the charter does, this is the source of our powers in Article 2. The districts, the wards, those types of things are spelled out upfront in, in the charter. You then move to the, how do people populate the government? How are people elected? When do the elections occur? What are the terms of office? And, and normally in these provisions, you will see very often ethics standards that are, that cover all elected officials. You may see open meeting standards that cover all officials in some of the charters I've just done. You will see civility provisions are being considered by charters, they're placed up front in the elections and governance section, which is in Article 3. Again, none of this has changed. All of these provisions are in your current charter, they're just reorganized. Article 4 is your legislative branch. Again, same provisions that are in the current charter, Article 5, the mayor, Article 6, I reserve for other elected officials. I haven't populated that yet, so I'll be making some little changes here and there in the document. Article 7 are your boards and commissions, 8 are your department heads and departments, 9 is education, 10 is the budget, then 11 is historical provisions, which could be expanded, and then Article 12 is taxing districts. When you go into the body of the document, you're going to see annotations and the, the objective of the annotations, and so this was kind of painstaking to put together, was to make sure that we can see where each of these provisions came from, because at some point, we're going to have to explain this to the public and it's not going to be an easy red line. We're going to have to explain what happened to provisions of the charter. And when you do a massive reorganization like this, that could be in the end tantamount to a total replacement document, not a replacement of ideas that are in your document, but the document itself will look very different. You want to make sure people understand where the section came from and, and that way we would then redline if we change the terms of office, for example. I know controversial subject, but if we change the terms of office, we would want to make it clear where the current term is in the current charter and how it ended up in the section it's in right now. But that was a pretty painstaking process and this way, going forward, it allows lawyers who work for the city, the members of the public who want to advocate for change in the city using provisions of the charter, it gives everybody a historic context for where these sections came from, because I suspect that a lot of provisions that are in the charter and a lot of powers that are in the charter will remain, it's important, but they're not going to be in the same place and they're going to be in a totally different structured environment than they are today. So those are the summaries, that's kind of a summary. And then one of the things we have to figure out after we listen in the next few weeks again to the public and, and I recommend, as I always do, Madam Chair and members of the commission, that we invite the public to speak as, as often as you'd like, especially when you start getting into debates and deliberations on issues, it's very useful to invite people, if not a full-fledged public hearing, but at least an hour, 45 minutes, half hour of public comment is very helpful from time to time as you go through this process. And, and so we have to decide at some point how we're going to tackle it. Do we tackle subject matters? Do we tackle, I very often say to commissions, why don't we start with the budget process? It's a good process, it has a beginning, it has an end and we have a lot of officials who know something about budget processes. We could do any number of ways you want to go to it, but at some point in November, we will take a look at this document and figure out how we're going to tackle it, because I think the council wants us to take a look at the whole document and to come back with a, with a substantially changed document. So that's, that's the logic behind the document and I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope it's helped you with your sleep. If anybody's had problems sleeping, this is a very, very good piece of reading material for that purpose, but.
Forty-five minutes to go.
Takes 45 minutes to run it.
Well, try, try lifting it up, it's pretty heavy also.
Commissioners have any questions? Nobody?
I only have one, it's not major, but as I read through what I was able to read through and I read through quite a bit of it. A lot of the, because of the environment that we're in now today, and I think it's also appropriate to look at it, a lot of the verbiage when we refer to elected officials is councilman. We want to take a hard look at that and change that?
My recommendation, if we're going to be doing a substantial rewrite of this document, that you should really move in the direction of gender neutrality. So I suspect that we'll see that throughout the document.
Okay.
That's up to you, but, but I would recommend it anyhow. I think as we go through the document, we should definitely try to start referring people's council members, at least we have an easy, an easy move and when you have a Board of Selectmen, the Board of Select person sounds very goofy. At least council members works much better, so.
That's a good point. I, there's, um, reading the description of the districts, it's almost from the oak tree to the stone wall across the brook kind of explanation in the charter as to what our districts are. So I thought it would be helpful for the commission to be provided with a map of the districts and of the wards so that if there's any difference between one and the other, we'd have a better idea.
There is. That might be a question we asked the Corporation Council when, when.
Yeah, well, there is, but I think we need both maps provided to us as we plow through this so that we really have a good understanding of the districts.
But the other point I want to make on that, and, and I'll talk to Mario about this and to others, is I was surprised to see the districts in the charter. In most communities, the districts are created every 10 years after redistricting and I'm not sure how you do it in Norwalk. So it's unusual to have your legislative districts laid out in the charter because they change every 10 years, based on Baker versus Carr, one person, one vote, the legislative, the congressional districts change, the legislative districts change, and your local legislative district should be changing. So, so I have an outstanding question as to why they're in the charter at all and what do you do for redistricting? So, so we're all together on that.
Yeah.
And inside a little bit.
Yes, I was going to try to explain that.
The taxing districts are part of the city government. They don't have anything to do with the legislative districts or the municipal districts.
Yeah, I get that.
Taxing districts, so they don't even line up with those maps. So actually, we have three maps in the city. One is the legislative map, one is the municipal election map, and one is a taxing district map. So that is why I think this was from back in the day when there weren't roads and things like that and these taxing districts were set up. So they don't align with any of the other maps.
So we need all three districts. We need all three maps.
Yeah, the districts I'm talking about are the, the section 2-3 council districts. I understand the taxing districts and the wards, I, yeah, but it's the council districts upon which you elect your members. Yeah, but it's the council districts upon which you elect your members that, uh, that I need to get some background on as to why they're in the charter at all. I understand the reason why there's three different types of districts, uh, but it's the council district themselves. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that it's going to be a confusing issue as we plow through this. So, um, is there any other comments from anyone? Yes.
Does, does anybody know? I mean, I, I don't know this. But I know trying to find maps in elections and finding out, you know, where your district is versus, uh, it's pretty difficult.
Mm-hmm. Uh, That's why I brought it up.
Yes, and it's a good thing. So my question is, Stephen mentions that it's every ten years that we go through a redistricting. Did we go through one ten years ago?
Not for taxing districts.
How about for the voting districts or?
We just did a new one for legislative ones that's done. And I, I don't, can't remember the last time. I, I believe it was in, within ten years that uh, street lines were changed. I think they were made to uh, be more straight, you know what I mean? Cause they were so jagged before. Um, and I think that'd be a question that Stuart would be able to
Okay.
Answer more, but I do believe we did, you know, straight them out.
The only, the only thing I know that when we were trying to find district boundaries, uh, that
Voting district.
Voting district.
Yes.
That they tended to follow and go way back to when the uh, city council districts were set up. Which is quite a while ago. Uh, so anyway, it's, it, it's just tough to, to kind of follow.
Yep. So I thought the maps would be
Yeah, absolutely.
Basic information that we need. Is there any, um, are there any other, um, materials that uh, any of the commissioners would like to be provided with?
We do have a few people from the public that.
That want to speak.
Play late. And they may want to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, is that everybody okay with that? So we reopen the hearing to allow them to speak? All right.
Okay.
Okay, if anyone would like to speak, um, please raise your hand electronically now and I will unmute you. And please state your name and address for the record. All right. Yep, go ahead, uh, Ms. Cici.
Um, this is Diane Cici, Olmstead Place. Um, I actually had joined, I think about ten after six expecting um, a lengthy meeting with, um, some background on the charter followed by a public hearing, but I guess, um, I had missed that. So I had posted a question, um, which I think has already been answered now. Um, regarding, um, being able to continue to submit comment, and I think you've answered that, that we can uh, continuously do that and there'll be more than just the legal public hearing, the statutory hearings for us to do that.
Yes, and there's.
So I do appreciate that.
There's a form online that you can use also to submit those, Diane.
Okay, and then, yeah, I think I saw that form online. And then if we're just sending, um, emails, would we direct it to a specific person? Or only submit comments through that online, um, mechanism?
Pardon?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be the best.
You can, um, so how, how do you give them the email? We're going to get an email address for you.
So those could also be submitted directly to me. Um, and I can give you my email address. It is J S C H A N T Z at norwalkct.org.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, are you the assistant city clerk?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, hi.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. And then, and I guess just a question, it doesn't have to be answered now, but if I had been part of public hearing, I would have asked. Um, I wonder if, um, the consultant or the committee can tell us whether or not you'll be reconsidering the public comments and feedback and suggestions, um, from the two thousand sixteen, um, roundabout with this. Um, I reviewed some of them at some, uh, that were presented formally by some of the neighborhood associations and I see, I believe everything on that list is as relevant today as it was then. So, and I see Mr. Mednick shaking his head yes, so. Thank you.
Um, and I was going to say that, um, we should, um, uh, somebody just gave me the list of things that occurred in the two thousand sixteen report. I'm not sure whether all the comments from two thousand sixteen are part of this. So I would recommend that somebody, uh, if somebody thinks they're relevant, they should be submitted. One of the things I, one of the services I provide to the commission is I do try to keep diligent track of all public comments that come in, uh, both your testimony this evening as well as any written comments that come in and provide those to the commission. We keep the commission up to date. City Clerk's office will do the same. Provide, uh, the commission with all updated comments. And at the time that they lay out their schedule, they will take a look at your comments, which will be given, uh, substantial weight, um, in terms of how they plan their schedule. Uh, so, um, but as to the comments from the last commission, I think somebody really needs to introduce them into the record so that they would be part of the record. Otherwise, um, I'm not sure how, uh, otherwise they would get before the body. So somebody should actually.
We can, actually, we can, I can request that the city clerk provide those documents to the full commission. Thank you.
That, that would be helpful and we'll try to spread the word through neighborhood groups. Um, to go ahead, even if they think it's redundant, if they have their records on, um, what they wanted, um, changed or updated to resubmit those just, just as well. Um, I'll review the YouTube of the stuff that I missed. I, I, I really appreciate your accommodating. Um, me stepping in, um, after the hearing. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for volunteering to do this too. We know it's a monumental, thankless, tireless, um, mostly payless, um, undertaking. Thank you.
And Diane, I, I don't know if you missed that we will be meeting every first and, uh, third Wednesday of the month. So that, uh,
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bresch. Yeah, that's great where I hopped in with the scheduling. So I'll note that as well. And, um, six o'clock can be cumbersome for those of us who work, but um, I think having that schedule in advance would makes it a little bit easier. My, my preference would have been six thirty or seven, but we, at least people, if people know that in advance, we can, um, we can prepare for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, there's another comment.
Next, we have Diane Laricella.
Good evening, Patsy and the commission.
Hi, Diane.
You can hear me and.
Hello.
Hello. Um, two Dianes in a row. This is past. Thank you for, I, I had trouble getting on, so I really appreciate you reopening and allowing the public to speak. Uh, first of all, thank you. Uh, I thank the, the city for initiating this step and the council and, and all of you for serving. Um, I also thank you, Attorney Mednick. I've listened in on some of your explanations and it's, uh, I, I love working with attorneys. I'm an environmental consultant, so this is refreshing. And, uh, I wish you all good luck. Um, I am very pleased that you will allow public comment uh, during this process. It's very important. I first off wanted to, now I will echo what Ms. Cici said because she and I used to be active members of the Coalition for Norwalk Neighborhood Associations, and we actually had a meeting, uh, several meetings where individual neighborhood associations reviewed, um, article by article, uh, and offered ideas. I think it's very important, Attorney Mednick and these, uh, new, um, volunteers, charter revision volunteers, to find out whether there are minutes notes of all the public hearings that took place uh, on the topic uh, that led to the initial vote that was not successful because of the way it was laid out. And I think this process sounds like it is much more not only accommodating of other ideas, you are open as they do in Wilton, and I would highly, and I'm in Wilton, they had a charter revision listening session before they ever appointed their charter revision commission because they wanted to hear from the public and the public's ideas. And I, so I thank you that we are modeling our efforts after that way of doing things instead of the very narrow view that was taken around, which did not meet up with much success. In fact, I thought that the only provision that was voted for was a gender neutrality provision, and apparently that is not the case. So I wanted to lift up the fact that throughout the document, gender neutrality should be aspired to and also codified. Um, I also hope, and I'll be cause I'm going to send my suggestions, is that we really buckle down and reconsider reorganizing some of the agencies because in my opinion, we still do not have an effective means to handle our environmental management in our city. I know there is some discussion about the possibility of starting an office of sustainability. I, of course, would be very happy with that, but, um, I do think that, uh, we still have silo vision, even though we had a reorganization of our city just a few years ago. And I was in favor of it, but I'm thinking that there's still a big gap. I do think we need to look, of course, at the terms of offices. That's what got us stuck the first time around. Uh, and we should look at what other cities and states do, have done for such an, a robust body. I personally feel we should have more than fifteen council people because that way our council people could actually do some additional homework instead of being spread so thin because they are all assigned to two or three committees of the common council. And many of us brought to the attention, but we were, it did not rise to, uh, being taken seriously, increasing the number of council members, both in the each district and also in the at-large roles. Boards and commissions, we have never really taken seriously planning and zoning commissioners being elected as opposed to appointed. Um, I also lastly wanted to state, when it comes to public particip- I think it's very important, number one, because this is only codified for ca- the full council. And it has been a welcome tradition and policy to allow public comment at council committees. And some boards and commissions have adopted public participation. But when I was president of the League of Women Voters, when Dick Mosher was mayor, we tried to advocate for public participation section in each of the council committees, the boards and commissions. Where that is placed, sometimes it's been placed like in the Board of Health at the end of the meeting. Not preferred, but at least it's there. I think it should be codified because we are the ones paying the taxes and we are who everyone works for, including the elected officials. So please hi- lift up public participation. And lastly, because of COVID and what we've seen that happens with pandemics, I think the city did handle switching to Zoom meetings very well. I really liked the chart that was presented by the I T department. I've explained it to people. It makes it easier. The one thing that definitely needs to be codified, and I am not, and I am going to lobby for this, is if the city must go back to virtual meetings and even continue, that they have to, they must not make include video. Because not, not seeing my face, you cannot note how passionate I am about something, how serious I've been taken. And I have been on statewide Zoom meetings throughout the pandemic where people's faces were seen. And that is only the portion of a Zoom permission that I'm sure the city has paid for and is not using. So I would like to codify it, put it in writing that when we have Zoom meetings or any virtual meetings, and I do appreciate that we have them, that it must, the video and maybe even the chat, but at least the video must be turned on because this has been the only part of this that I think is very sad and I'm, I don't think is transparent enough. Thank you very much for listening to me and I appreciate all of your work.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? There are no other comments and it's now, uh, six thirty five thirty-six. So, um, a motion then to end this public participation portion of the hearing.
So move.
Okay, Rick McQuaid.
Second.
Dixon, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything that any member of the commission would like to bring forward? Any other suggestions? Okay.
But, um, Chair, I was going to, to ask about the email, but it seems as though we've sorted that out. There's the online forum and then they can go to Jordan. But, uh, in the event that someone were to submit a written comment, is there somewhere that, if they mail it here, it ends up in a box or a?
Yeah. And Jordan, could you please, uh, elucidate?
Sure. So if they want to mail that, they can send that directly to the city clerk's office, which is also the mayor's office. So it's city hall. Um, they can send that directly to me and that's Jordan Chance as well.
Is that also on the website?
I will, I will make sure that's on the website.
Okay. That's important. And then you will disseminate that information to all of us. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you all and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good reading. Have some, um, um, time put aside to catch up on this. It's absolutely fascinating. And we'll see you all in, um, two weeks.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.